Good morning and welcome to the Committee on Transportation and Infrastructure. At this time, can everybody please silence your cellphones? If you wish to testify, please come up to the Sergeant-at-Arms desk to fill out a testimony slip. Written testimony can be emailed to testimony@council.nyc.gov. Again, that is testimony@council.nyc.gov. At this time and going forward, no one is to approach the dais. I repeat, no one is to approach the dais. Chair, we are ready to begin.
Thank you and good morning. Thank you all for attending the hearing on Committee on Transportation and Infrastructure. This hearing is focused on future-proofing New York City's infrastructure to be prepared for every day and once-in-a-generation challenges we will face. I would like to thank my colleagues who are present here today. Councilmember Rita Joseph. As a city of islands with 520 miles of shoreline, a hurricane season that has increased in severity over the last few decades, it is imperative that our infrastructure is prepared for the future. Beyond the issue and concerns we are aware of, in March, with the collapse of the Francis Scott Key Bridge in Baltimore, we must be more intentional in preparing our infrastructure. Today, I am expecting to hear from various city agencies that are tasked with planning, building, and inspecting our infrastructure to make sure we are proactive. I am particularly interested in hearing how our bridges, sewers, and streets are maintained, repaired, and improved. The Department of Transportation owns, operates, and maintains hundreds of bridges that New Yorkers use every day. These are vital arteries, and it is important that not just the Department of Transportation continues the important maintenance and repair work for these bridges, but also that the council and everyday New Yorkers know the state of our bridges. In the past, the Department of Transportation published an annual report on the state of our bridges, as well as included information about bridge conditions in the mayor's management report. Since 2021, the Department of Transportation has not released a bridge report or included bridge grading data in the mayor's management report. During today's hearing, I would like to hear about the state of the bridges, but also when DOT will begin sharing inspection data with the public and what form that will take. Our sewers are another vital piece of infrastructure that New Yorkers rely on every day. Some of our sewer pipes are reaching 100 years old. Thus, it is imperative that we, as a city, maintain and improve such infrastructure to ensure that we can handle the increased flooding and rain we are seeing due to climate change. I am very interested to hear how the Department of Environmental Protection, Department of Design and Construction, and the Department of Transportation all work together to maintain the important piece of our city for today and for tomorrow. Finally, I would like to examine our roads with a particular focus on innovation and coordination. The Department of Transportation has led the country in the use of recycled asphalt pavement, and we should continue to set a national example as we prepare our city for the future. I am very interested to hear about the results of a number of pilots the Department of Transportation has undertaken, particularly the use of plastic additives from waste that would have otherwise gone to a landfill. I am encouraged by the Department of Transportation's commitment to use new technology to maintain and upgrade our infrastructure, and want to know how we at the council can support and build on their efforts. We will also be hearing two pieces of legislation today. First, introduction 272 sponsored by Councilmember Rita Joseph would require a capital plan and timeline for installing public bathrooms across the city. I will now turn to Councilmember Joseph to talk about her bill.
Thank you, Councilmember... Thank you, Chair Brooks-Powers. Good morning, everyone. Today, I'm pleased that the members of this Committee on Transportation and Infrastructure is hearing the bill. Intro 272 was an introduction in collaboration with Mark Levine, Manhattan Board President. Intro 272, which is part of my bathroom bill initiative package, is a local law in relation to a capital plan and timeline for installing public bathrooms in New York City. This bill will require that the mayor designate an agency or office in coordination with Department of Parks and Recreation and the Department of Transportation to develop a report that proposes a capital project plan and implementation timeline for the installation and maintenance of public bathroom facilities. Each of the sites to be identified pursuant to introduction number 258A, a local law that reports on suitable locations for installing public bathrooms. This bill was passed and adopted last session. The report would further propose the scope of project, estimated cost, potential funding sources, and appropriate maintenance schedules for each facility. The bill would also require the lead agency officer office to consider relevant population data and social and equity indicators and to consult with qualified city entities regarding foreseeable challenges to the facility installation and maintenance. As Manhattan Board President Mark Levine said before, and I repeat it here, "The troubling of deficit public restroom is not an inconvenience; it's a matter of equity, public health, sanitation, and basic human rights." In the hearing, the bill is getting passed, we are showing New Yorkers that we have been listening to their requests on the issue and demonstrating our commitment for their well-being. Furthermore, we're telling visitors and tourists that we welcome them to our great city. I'm looking forward to hearing the testimony from the city agency, different groups about the bill. Again, thank you for your collaboration. Thank you, Chair. This has been a day in the making. I've been pushing for bathroom bills as a mom, as a forever educator who would go on trips and look for restrooms for our students to use while we were on trips. So this is important for someone who has an older mom, and I know all my older New Yorkers would relate to this, having taken their medication, looking for restrooms, dads, moms, and all of those who use public restrooms. So I look forward to working with you guys and creating this amazing project. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Joseph. Looking forward to seeing this through alongside you. Second introduction, number 574 sponsored by Councilmember Gail Brewer, would require a website that would serve as the main source of information about the open spaces under the control of the city. Any events taking place at those spaces and information about any permits needed to use those spaces. Before we begin, I'd like to acknowledge that we've been joined by Councilmember Ariola, and I would also like to thank my staff and committee staff for their hard work. Kevin Kotowski, Senior Policy Analyst; John Basile, Senior Policy Analyst; Mark Chen, Senior Counsel to the Committee; Connor Mealy, Counsel to the Committee; Renee Taylor, my Chief of Staff; Julian Martin, my new Legislative and Budget Director; and Kiara Powell, my Communications Director. I will now ask the committee counsel to swear in representatives from the administration. And before you do that, I'd like to publicly thank the Department of Transportation for getting your testimony over prior to today. I appreciate it. It is helpful because we were able to adjust our questions in my testimony, in my opening statement based on that, and again, I think it will lead for having a much more productive and informed conversation today. So I have publicly bashed you for not having it, so I will publicly thank you for having it. And also, we've been joined by my colleague, Councilmember Mercedes Narcisse.
If you could all raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth in your testimony before this committee and answer Councilmember questions truthfully?
Good morning, Chair Brooks-Powers and members of the Committee on Transportation and Infrastructure. I am Margaret Forgione, First Deputy Commissioner at the New York City Department of Transportation. With me today are Deputy Commissioner of Bridges and Chief Bridge Officer Paul Schwartz and Assistant Commissioner for Intergovernmental and Community Affairs Rick Rodriguez. We are also joined by the Department of Environmental Protection's Deputy Chief Operating Officer Kim Cipriano and the Department of Design and Construction's Deputy Commissioner of Infrastructure Thomas Nguyen, and the Department of Parks and Recreation's Chief of Policy and Long-Range Planning Sarah Nielsen and Assistant Commissioner for Architecture and Engineering Program Management Terrence McCormick. Thank you for the opportunity to testify on behalf of Mayor Adams and Commissioner Rodriguez on how the city is future-proofing our infrastructure. I want to begin by giving an overview of New York City DOT's bridges. New York City DOT owns, operates, and maintains 809 bridges throughout New York City. The Brooklyn, Manhattan, Williamsburg, and Queensborough bridges are some of our most notable bridges, but our inventory is as diverse as the city itself. DOT operates 23 movable bridges, such as the Pulaski Bridge over Newtown Creek and the Swingspan Willis Avenue Bridge over the Harlem River that connects Manhattan and the Bronx. Additionally, DOT provides capital rehabilitation for 53 culverts, or tunnels, that direct water away from roads, and inspects and repairs over 600 retaining walls. New York City DOT's vast web of bridges is in the hands of experienced engineers in DOT's Division of Bridges. Specializing in structural, mechanical, electrical, environmental, geotechnical, and civil engineering, our team oversees the design, construction, and maintenance of DOT's inventory. Safety is our top priority at New York City DOT, and all of our bridges are safe. DOT's bridges are inspected at least once every two years, in line with federal mandates, but more often if determined necessary. The New York State Department of Transportation hires licensed engineering consultants to perform these biennial inspections for all bridges except pedestrian bridges and bridges less than 20 feet in length. The remaining bridges are inspected by New York City DOT's Inspection Team of Licensed Professional Engineering Consultants. These inspections allow us to determine specific rehabilitation or corrective repair needs. Ninety-nine percent of our bridges are in fair, good, or very good condition. The seven bridges that are rated poor are in the current fiscal '24 to '33 capital plan and continue to be safe for their allowed uses. New York City DOT has a robust capital bridge project portfolio. At $12.4 billion, nearly half of the agency's fiscal '24 to '33 capital plan is devoted to bridge reconstruction and rehabilitation. We hire consultants to design, construct, and provide onsite oversight for the majority of our bridge capital contracts. At any given time, we have between 25 and 40 capital bridge project contracts underway. The scope of these projects is unique to each individual bridge and range from full reconstruction to targeted repairs of specific bridge components. The purpose, however, is the same: to extend the useful life of the bridge and protect the safety of New York City travelers. In addition to capital projects, New York City DOT has in-house tradespeople who can be deployed on demand, as well as our one-and-where contractors capable of responding quickly to urgent conditions. We also have preventive maintenance contracts for the maintenance and preservation of the East River and movable bridges. Turning to bridge ratings and how New York City DOT determines the overall condition of our bridges. DOT has a clear understanding of the condition of our entire inventory of bridges, but coming up with a translatable rating is a complicated process. Prior to 2016, in conformance with New York State DOT standards, New York City DOT generated an overall condition rating for vehicular bridges under a 1-to-7 scale, with 1 indicating structural failure and 7 indicating new condition. This changed in 2016 when the American Association of State Highway Transportation Officials came out with an element rating system which breaks down each bridge component into four condition states ranging from good to severe and replaces qualitative ratings with quantitative assessments. This new federal rating system, however, does not prescribe an overall bridge condition rating. Because the New York City Charter mandates an overall bridge condition rating, City DOT worked with State DOT to develop an overall bridge condition rating that is consistent for all bridge types. Together, we developed a new calculated condition rating scale that is based on three national bridge infrastructure ratings: NBI DEC, NBI Superstructure, and NBI Substructure. These ratings are then given relative weights based on their overall importance and are now referred to as NBI weighted and are on a scale of 0 to 9. We then translate these ratings into our verbal condition ratings of poor (0 to 4), fair[863.86][863.86](4.01 to 6.4), good (6.41 to 7.7), and very good (7.71 to 9). We will use these ratings in the next annual Bridge and Tunnel Report that we are releasing in the coming months. On tunnels, City DOT maintains four vehicular tunnels and one pedestrian tunnel. These include the Park Avenue Tunnel, First Avenue Tunnel, Battery Park Underpass, West Street Underpass, and the 191st Street Pedestrian Tunnel. Like our bridges, our tunnels are inspected on a two-year cycle according to federal mandates by our in-house inspectors and consultants. We are also looking at ways to make our tunnels more resilient to changing climate and increased flooding. This year, we are looking to award a contract to install flood protection at the Battery Park Underpass and West Street Underpass consisting of floodproof gates and doors to protect the tunnel and its ventilation structures. Aside from bridges and tunnels, New York City DOT is responsible for operating and maintaining 6,300 miles of roadway and highways and also has jurisdiction over 12,000 miles of sidewalk. All New Yorkers use roadways and sidewalks to get around, whether by foot, bike, wheelchair, bus, car, or other modes. And all of our goods travel to their final destinations on our streets. Maintaining streets in a state of good repair is a central part of DOT's mission and is essential to the quality of life and economic success of the city. DOT resurfaces roadways to address problems on the surface, including cracking, patching, and peeling, by replacing the top layer of asphalt pavement. This extends the roadway's lifespan and helps prevent potholes. The more we pave, the fewer potholes we need to fill. DOT's budget has baseline funding for resurfacing of 1,100 lane miles and up to 50 miles of protected bike lanes each year. In addition to our resurfacing work, DOT crews also fix potholes. We are committed to timely response to pothole complaints and respond in about two days unless there are underlying conditions that require a larger project. New York City needs the tools to build faster, better, and more efficiently for all of its capital projects. For this reason, the city is working with the Senate and Assembly on our Alternative Delivery Bill that would allow the city to use progressive design-build to speed up procurement on capital projects through a one-step process that allows early work to start sooner than under traditional design-bid-build model. This would help the city deliver projects faster and keep assets in a state of good repair. Progressive design-build is being used around the country, as well as here in New York City by the Battery Park City Authority to deliver 8,000 linear feet of coastal flood protection. New York City should be able to use this important tool to deliver projects that will benefit New Yorkers throughout the city. Now turning to the legislation before the council today. First, intro 272 sponsored by Councilmember Joseph. This bill will require the city to develop a capital plan and implementation timeline for installing public restrooms at locations identified in the report required by Local Law 114 of 2022. The city supports expanded access to public restrooms for all New Yorkers. The city and its partners currently operate 1,066 public restrooms citywide, covering 98% of the city. Additionally, the report New York City Parks and DOT published pursuant to Local Law 114 of 2022 identified 151 additional restroom sites across the five boroughs, many in city parks. These sites include 55 planned projects to construct new public restrooms, all of which are in progress and expected to be completed within the next few years, as well as 96 additionally potentially feasible sites. As the report also notes, DOT plans to move forward with a stakeholder approval process for 10 automatic public toilet sites, which are installed and maintained by the city's coordinated street furniture franchisee, J.C. Deco, and are not capitally funded. This administration does not support this bill as written. Capital planning is a collaborative process between the agencies, City Hall, and the council. The planning must take into consideration the overall capital needs of the city and standard project scheduling challenges. The administration would like to work on this bill to ensure flexibility is maintained as the city undertakes large-scale infrastructure priorities. Finally, I'm intro 574 sponsored by Councilmember Brewer, which would require DOT to create a website that provides expanded information about open spaces on an open-space coordination platform. DOT is proud of the public spaces we provide to New Yorkers, including our pedestrian plazas and open streets, where we support programming and events to create vibrant public spaces. Putting on these events often requires input from multiple agencies, which includes the mayor's Office of Citywide Event Coordination and Management, which helps to oversee and coordinate. Events can also happen in spaces owned by other agencies that DOT does not have jurisdiction over, such as parkland. CECM posts a number of resources, guides, event details, and other information on its websites about using the city's different public spaces for events and programming. For our part, DOT posts details about the days and times when our public spaces are open to the public on our website. Sister agencies that manage public spaces also do the same. The administration would be happy to continue conversations with the council about how to best coordinate the use of the city's many public spaces. In conclusion, I would like to thank the council for the opportunity to testify before you today. We are proud of the work that we do to keep the city's infrastructure in a state of good repair, work that will benefit New Yorkers for generations to come. We would now be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. I'd like to acknowledge that we've been joined by Majority Leader Amanda Farias and Councilmember Chris Banks. Before I get into my questions, I am going to have Councilmember Rita Joseph to ask her questions.
Thank you. Thank you. We look forward to working with you on the bill to make sure we get to a good place. So we look forward to that. Thank you for supporting the bill. As per mandated in the report from Local Law 114 of 2022, the city and city partners currently operate 1,066 public restrooms, right? Citywide, covering 98% of the city, and 178 modified ZIP code. Additionally, the report stated that the Department of Parks and Recreation and Department of Transportation identified 151 additional restroom sites, 55 new restrooms in progress, and 96 potential sites for new restrooms. What is the current status of implementation for these newly identified restroom sites, and is there any plans to implement?
Thank you, Councilmember. I'll respond for DOT, and then we'll ask Parks to come up and speak to their jurisdiction. So as we highlighted in the bathroom report, under our franchise, our J.C. Deco franchise, we are able to install 20 automatic pay toilets, or public toilets, I should say. We currently have six, and we have plans to get the remaining toilets in. We've identified 10 sites that we are now having J.C. Deco examine for feasibility. That process should be concluded very shortly, and then at that time, we will begin the rest of the process, which is to share them with the local council member, the community board, and to continue the review and approval process.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm excited. Public restrooms.
Could you just raise your right hand? Do you affirm to tell the truth in your testimony here before this council and answer Councilmember questions truthfully?
I do. My name is Matt Rye. I'm the Chief of Citywide Legislative Affairs for the Parks Department. Happy to add to our colleagues here to note that, as you noted, several new locations were identified. A subset of those, 55 of those, are active projects, which will all be complete within the next couple of years. The additional 96 in that universe were potentially feasible, so require both further technical analysis to confirm their feasibility, and also capital and expense funding would have to be identified to move those projects forward. But, so 55 of the locations are moving ahead as active projects and will be constructed in the next couple of years.
Couple of years, and I'll be off the council by then, or I'll still be here to celebrate?
I can't predict the future in terms of your term here at the council, but they are active, moving along. Obviously, the agency does everything it can to move park projects, capital projects, as quickly as we can. We understand how important these amenities are to the public. We, you know, we share your advocacy and enthusiasm. We take every opportunity to identify these projects, work with the council and other partners to identify funding for them, which can be, you know, a complicated undertaking, but even so, we do everything we can to advance them as quickly as we can.
Thank you. I think bathroom advocates would be very happy. There's a whole P campaign going on with the groups to make sure that folks have access to public restrooms. So thank you so much, Chair. I appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, Commissioner Forgione, for your testimony once again. Just wanted to start on bridges. So the New York City Department of Transportation... Excuse me. The New York City Department of Transportation owns, operates, and maintains hundreds of bridges and tunnels throughout the city. But over the last few years, there has been less and less public information about the condition of these bridges. I'm glad to hear that this will change in the coming months and look forward to reviewing your upcoming Annual Bridge and Tunnel Report. In the meantime, I'd like to know what inspections of New York City's bridges and tunnels currently take place? And when the New York State Department of Transportation inspects a bridge, does DOT rely entirely on the state inspection, or does DOT perform any kind of independent verification?
Okay, I'll start, and then I'll pass it off to Commissioner Schwartz, who oversees this division for DOT and knows everything in detail. So all of our bridges are subjected to a biennial inspection that is covered by New York State DOT. There are a small amount of bridges, such as pedestrian bridges, that we are responsible for the inspection of, as well as the tunnels. Those inspections yield very detailed reports. When there is anything that needs to be addressed in the short run, we have workforces, both in-house and by contract, who can address those issues. And those reports, most importantly, go to inform our capital construction plan of how we schedule the bridges in upcoming years that I discussed. Paul can elaborate a little bit more and then explain detail to your question.
Thank you, Chair. I appreciate the opportunity to be here today and indicate to you what 615 colleagues and I are working on, some of what we're working on. So inspections are currently taking place. Bridges, as First Deputy Commissioner Forgione mentioned, are inspected either biennially or more frequently if needed. New York State DOT does those inspections on roadway bridges. They are performed by licensed professional engineers. They are hands-on inspections, which basically means you have to be within three feet of the structure. The bridges that they don't inspect, we have inspectors in-house that do it, again, licensed professional engineers that work for the city, and then we supplement that with consultants as well. Any of the inspections yield that yield... The results that get yielded by the inspections, to your second question, are then passed on to our group. We do an independent analysis of the work that is done. So any inspection report originally, before it gets issued by either the state or in-house, goes through a QA/QC process to make sure that's meeting all the required checks. It then comes to our group. We would then look at that inspection report that would indicate actionable items, and we would act on those actionable items. So it does receive many levels of review.
And why does DOT supplement the inspectors with consultants? Is it that you don't have enough inspectors?
So we do it for a few different reasons. Partially is to supplement the workforce that we have, but also certain structures require a little bit of different types of expertise due to the way that they're constructed, and we want to make sure that we're pairing the right people with the right experience on the right structure to get the best results.
And do you feel, from a cost perspective, that it's more cost-effective to hire the consultants versus to hire more staff that are skilled to do this work?
We feel that there needs to be the right mix, right? That you need to retain a certain amount of in-house capability to be able to go out and do the work. But like many things, right, there are some things that if you're not going to use that skill set, particular skill set, very frequently, that's what you want to outsource, and you want to tap on that when you need it. So we think we have the right balance to be effective.
No, thank you for that. Has DOT taken any proactive steps to secure our bridges in light of the tragedy in Baltimore?
So I think I want to lead by saying in this one, "Nature is our friend." And the reason I say that is that the ship in Baltimore is a neo-Panamax class of ship, right? It's a very large container ship. A ship of that size would not be able to navigate up the East River to where some of our signature bridges are, because the channel depth of the East River would not allow that. So the ship is deeper than the geography that allows it to move through there. Further to that, the way that the New York Harbor operates is very different from the way Baltimore Harbor operates. We are under U.S. Coast Guard jurisdiction. They have something called the Vessel Traffic Services, or VTS. They are responsible for the safety of the harbor. Ships like the MV Dolly would require a number of tugs to escort them, as well as harbor pilots. Harbor pilots are very well-trained, experienced captains who would board the ship potentially and pilot it. They're very familiar with the harbor itself. Between the actual natural barriers and, as well as the administrative precautions that are taken... are taken, an incident like that is very, very unlikely to occur.
Thank you for that also. You mentioned that seven bridges are rated poor. Which bridges are those, and what steps are taken to make sure there are no dangers to the public?
So just because a bridge is rated poor doesn't mean it's unsafe, and that's important for me to get across. If anything was unsafe, we would close it to the public, and we would make the appropriate repairs before reopening it. So any bridge that is open is safe for its intended use. Just because a bridge is rated poor, there could be many years of service still left in, in that structure. Any bridge that is currently rated poor is in our capital plan. We also will monitor those bridges closely. They may receive more frequent inspections if need be. We also have a slew of resources to be able to make the repairs and keep it safe. So we have our in-house forces, we have contracted when-to-wear forces, and then we've got our capital capacity. The seven bridges that are rated poor are 19th Avenue and 21st Avenue over the BMT, Hill Drive and Prospect Park.
I'm sorry, Paige is talking to the mic, more than having a hard time hearing you.
Apology. 19th Avenue and 21st Avenue over the BMT, that's in Brooklyn. Hill Drive and Prospect Park. West 148th Street Pedestrian Bridge over Amtrak in Riverside Park. East Drive or Willadel Arch, which is in Central Park. The westbound BQE over Furman Street. And Riverside Park North over Amtrak. All these bridges are in our 10-year capital plan.
I got six of those. I'm not sure which one I missed.
19th Avenue?
I have.
21st Avenue?
Mm-hmm.
Hill Drive?
It was 21st Avenue that I missed, okay.
And that will be shown in our annual report, which we'll be publishing in a few months from now.
And how soon will their condition be improved to good or very good? I know they're in the capital plan, but what's the timeline for the improvement itself?
So we'll have to get back to you with the exact timing of the capital projects for those, what fiscal years they're in, but it is published in our capital plan.
Also, I'd like to acknowledge that we've been joined by Council Member Gail Brewer as well. I am going to come back to bridges. Wanted to touch on federal funding for a little bit. In light of the recent collapse of the Francis Scott Key Bridge in Baltimore, and given the Biden administration's commitment to infrastructure development, does DOT anticipate any additional federal funding for bridge infrastructure repairs and safety measures? And if so, what kind of funding is DOT seeking out?
So just to answer your question generally, we are always looking to take advantage of every possible funding source, and we watch every single funding that does come out, and we try to see what is applicable within our Bridge Division, as well as other divisions, to be able to apply for that funding. So I don't know if you had something more specific, but the answer is yes, we intend to pursue all the funding that we are able to.
And has the administration been in communication with Washington on the matter of the federal funding?
Yes, we are.
I'm going to yield and allow my colleagues to ask questions. First, we have up Council Member Ariola.
Thank you, Chair. I'm going to go to potholes. So according to your report, the potholes that are repaired on local streets are basically kind of flat. They haven't gone up, they haven't gone down. But we've certainly seen more potholes in, in our boroughs, and in my district especially. So what happens is we notify DOT, we put in 3-1-1 complaints, they come out, they fill the pothole, but they fill it with cold patch. And then they're supposed to come back and fill it with asphalt and sealant. That never happens. I have complaints from multiple constituents that say the minute the cold patch goes in, it immediately begins to break up and becomes pebbles all over the street. In fact, one of my constituents filled 15 buckets of cold patch, pebbles from the cold patch, from the potholes that are on his street. Now I know we're waiting to have the street completely finished, you know, you know, done in a, in, in the right way, milled and repaved, but that's not going to happen until the end of June. Why aren't we fixing the potholes the right way the first time, instead of having to go back and forth, or not going back at all?
So thank you very much for your question. We share that concern. We don't want half-complete repairs, that we simply have to go back and revisit the site. Most times of the day, we have hot material available. As you know, we have two asphalt plants that DOT operates, plus we have a number of vendor plants that produce hot material. Certain times of the day, particularly at night, we don't always, in every locate, in every borough, have access to hot material. So we, we do prior ourselves on quickly filling potholes, but if we sent people out immediately at a time when we did not have hot material available, that was why cold patch was utilized in that location. So what I'd like to ask you is to get me that location, we can repair it properly, and then I'm glad to hear that it's in our milling and paving cycle coming up.
Okay, we'll get you that information. Thank you. But I also want to make you know that most of them, whether it's day or night, are being filled with cold patch. That's something you might want to look into.
I'll follow up on that. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, we have Council Member Banks.
Hey, good morning, and thank you, Deputy Commissioner. Wanted to, first of all, thank you for the, the work that you're doing out in the 42nd Council Mag District. We've had a very robust street resurfacing, and we thank you, badly needed, so we appreciate that. Also, too, we wanted just to kind of focus in a little bit on the notification. That's something that's been an issue. We've had residents tow cars, being towed, and just the lack of notification has been an issue. And I've always said this, we need our streets repaved, but we don't want our lives interrupted. So that's something, obviously, we want to make sure that there's some more clarity as to when information's going out, who the information's going to, and that it's getting to the residents that are being affected with the street, with the street repairs or the street resurfacing that's taking place. DOT previously had a goal to repave about 1,300 lane miles annually, which was reduced to 1,100 lanes, miles per year in fiscal year 2020. According to the most recent preliminary mayor's management report, DOT maintains that this goal of 1,100 lane miles. Although we have had several mid-winters, what will happen to our streets if we have more typical winters, more typical winter season? And does the DOT staff capacity, do you have the capacity to repave the additional lane miles beyond 1,100 fiscal year, in the fiscal year 2025, if the roads fall into disrepair?
Okay. Thank you very much for your questions, Council Member. We totally appreciate your support of our resurfacing program, which is very critical for the city. So just on your first item about notifications, so every week, our Borough Commissioner's Office sends out to like a broad array of entities, both the weekly schedule, and we also share the seasonal schedule with the community boards. We also sit down annually with the community boards and present the streets that are eligible for resurfacing to those boards, to take in their feedback as to which streets are more important, more critical, and we adjust our schedule accordingly. DOT, we also post our resurfacing schedules on our website, and if you have other ideas for us on better ways to get the word out to people, we're more than happy to work with you on that. You raised the question of our lane mile target. So currently, we're at 1,150 lane miles per year, and that amount has been baselined in our budget. In previous years, the resurfacing target fluctuated. Sometimes it was lower, and as you mentioned, sometimes it was higher at 1,300 lane miles. We've now established 1,150 as our target, which we think is very helpful for our planning, because we can have the right amount of vehicles to go along with it, we can prepare our vendors and in-house for how much asphalt we expect to produce, and that sort of thing. We think we have reached a good equilibrium with that number.
Okay.
In terms of the repair of the streets overall. Happy to talk about it.
Thank you. And I know now that since we have gotten these repairs, resurfacing done in my district, I want to know, what's the timeframe with the, for the street markings? Because we've seen streets done, and then it takes a longer time to get the markings on the ground. So will that be improved? Will we see it in the next couple of days? What's the timeframe?
Right. Sometimes it can be a period of at least several weeks, but on larger roads, we look to have a minimum amount of markings, such as a double yellow, at least to make sure that drivers and pedestrians are guided in that way. We want to get down crosswalk markings and all of the markings as soon as possible. We work with a bunch of different contractors to, to do this work, and so at any given time, we're, we're juggling different streets. Again, if you have any location that you're seeing that you feel it's taking too long, please let me know.
We'll definitely let you know. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Majority Leader Farias, followed by Council Member Gail Brewer.
Thank you, Chair. Thanks, folks, for being here today and testifying. Just, I know we've spoken about street resurfacing already with member questions and like filling potholes and stuff, and you've touched on it in different ways, but do we have a regular schedule of expectation, street by street, or board by board, on street resurfacing? I know pothole filling is kind of like, immediately, we obviously don't want people's cars, bikes, children running into a pothole, and so we do that patchwork. But what is our schedule for regular maintenance of entire street resurfacing?
So to answer your question, we do not say that a given street must be paved every X number of years. We do it based on condition. So we have a team of people that go out, and we have a very detailed assessment, where we look at cracking, potholes, ponding, all aspects of street disrepair, and then we rate the streets. We rate 90% of the streets every year. We can't quite get to 100, but we're constantly, it would only take a little bit more than a year to get to those, rest of those streets. And then what we do is, based on the lane miles in every borough, and then the lane miles in every community board, we allocate the corresponding amount of work to that community board and to that borough. And then we do it, you know, we just keep coming back every single year, and we allocate the same number of miles. But we consider it very important to work with our elected officials and the community boards to hear from them. They may feel that one street that is in a little bit better condition than another is still more critical to get milled and paved, and we will accommodate those requests as we meet with them and adjust our schedule.
Okay, yeah, I did hear you in response to Council Member Banks state that you sent, you send the schedule for the seasonal schedule to the community boards, and then I know, I see in my inbox the weekly or the next several weeks we're going to do.
Oh, good, I'm glad you see that.
Yeah, I mean, my office, we tried to circulate that. We have a weekly newsletter that goes out, and we try to include that kind of stuff so people can be aware of maybe
Thank you.
avoiding some of the traffic stoppers because of construction, or just to know that, to be more mindful of when they're driving down the street, there might be a dip because of reconstruction. But I, I do just want to reiterate that seasonal schedules I'd love to get, not just community board. Every community board throughout the city has a different level of engagement, both in membership and in outreach. There is not a standard practice across community boards on how they communicate outward, other than needing to have a monthly newsletter, which look very differently board by board. And so I know if I were equipped with a seasonal schedule, we would have a more continuous communication outward to the community, so folks can be mindful. If, can I ask one more question? Thank you, Chair. So I just wanted to talk about headcount for pothole inspectors. Do we have that number? And do we know if it's up to par with our capacity of what we need to fill throughout the city?
Okay, we don't have dedicated pothole inspectors. What we do have is the street assessment unit that I did mention, but we also have literally hundreds of people every day out on our streets.
Yeah.
So we have HICA inspectors who are, say they're inspecting a street cut by Con Ed. When they see a condition, they call it in or they report it. We also, in our resurfacing division, has over 1,000 people in it, has about 1,300 people. That's 1,300 people that are eyes and ears on the ground.
Okay.
So we take a lot in from 3-1-1, yourself, people like your staff, all the public. But we also have every single day, like a lot of DOT eyes and ears, and we're all like trained from day one. If you're out in the field, you see a condition, you call it in.
Okay, great. And then my last question on street lighting. According to the PMR, the average time for DOT to repair street lights during the first four months of the fiscal year increased from 3.6 days last year to 5.5 days. Why is it taking about two days longer for DOT to repair street signs?
Right. So we looked further into what was happening with our street lighting contractor. All of our streetlight repairs are done through contractors, they're not done by us.
Okay.
There seemed to be a little lack of efficient communication that we detected at the beginning of the fiscal year, and we have since corrected that, and now the repairs are going much closer to the typical timeframe that we had previously.
Okay, great. Yeah, I know, I'm, I'm like a, I'm a driver in my community, so most of the time when I'm on roads and I bump into either a street light or a traffic light that is not on, I try my best to go through the 3-1-1 that then takes you to the DOT system, to then put in another form. But it's good to know that we found the hiccup and we're working on it. And if there's any other way that we can, I mean, I don't know what systems we're using, but I know there probably are better ways to make sure when we put in a new bulb, we know when the lifespan of that bulb, or how long it's going to take to need repair for us to be more mindful of. But I appreciate being on top of that and answering my questions. Thank you, Chair, for the additional time.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, for including 574, and thank you, Margaret Forgioli, for stating that the administration would continue conversations about this bill. I will say that there is, I'm always thinking about the public, and in this case, just so you know, there's a local law that I think Lori Combo passed many years ago, that states that there should be coordination, and there is no Local Law 7 of 2021 coordination in order to have this information available to the public. With all due respect to the, to the Citywide Event Coordination Office, the portal is completely out of date. I looked at it yesterday. It needs updating. And so then the question is, it's not obviously just DOT, but I mean, people would love to have the platform done by you, because I think Sapo, I call it Sapo, but I guess it's called something else, hasn't got all of the public spaces under its control. And so it's very hard for the public to know what is going on. So that's why we would love to see perhaps a DOT, or if not you, then who would be managing this information? Because we would love to see it be arts and cultural institutions, we'd love to have community boards, the bids, and the general public, so they know what's going on. To me, open space also includes playgrounds and open streets, it also includes different hours, it should, what would be the time of the event, and obviously, the permits and licenses needed for the applications. You know, New Yorkers love to be outdoors, they love to use these spaces. I have to say, it's very hard to be able to do that, just, you know, you think, because you and I kind of know who to call, but it is not clear to the public. That's why we were introducing 574. And so we'd love to see a much better coordination and information, and we always feel that because most of this information is actually DOT, if you look at the street's usage, et cetera. So what do you think could be the way in which we could approach the administration to make this possible for really good information on a platform?
Thank you, Council Member. So we're very proud of how the city has evolved in terms of utilizing our public spaces, and the world is a totally different place than it was even just a few years back, between open streets, plazas, and all the other good initiatives that fellow city agencies are doing. CECM's website does contain information on all locations of, in, in the whole city that require a permit for that activity. require a permit for that activity. So while DOT's website does have, of course, all of our open streets, locations, and hours of the open street, if there's an event taking place, that will always be on CECM's website as well. I think you're correct in that things could be a little bit more user-friendly, and I think we'd like to talk to you more about how we can make sure the public can more easily access that information about any given public space that they're interested in.
Right. We'd love to have further conversations because I do get a lot of complaints about people not understanding it. I have to be honest with you. Number two, in terms of milling, the question for me and for the public, because they don't understand, obviously, when you mill, that means that eventually you'll have asphalt and it'll be very smooth and the lines will return, and that's great. How, but nobody knows how long it takes for the milling to take place. And then is there a timeframe for that? And how do we communicate that to the public? You definitely tell us what's going on, but not necessarily how long. And what do they complain?
Right. So especially in your area in Manhattan, the time between milling and paving is something very critical to us. So what we do prior to actually milling the street is we reach out to all the utilities and fellow city agencies, and we inform them we're about to open up the street. Because the last thing we want is to mill the street, pave it very quickly, and then have somebody come along in two weeks, two months, or even a year, and say, I need to cut this beautiful new street open. So what we try to do is after it is milled, get everybody to come in and do their street work if they need to, get out hopefully efficiently and quickly, and so that we can come back and pave. So the majority of our streets are milled and then paved within a matter of weeks. We have a very small number that extend further than that, where the work was a little bit more intensive on the part of a utility or a fellow city agency. But we watch it very carefully. I get a report every week on the number of days that our milled streets have been open. We look at them, we try to figure out why anything is staying open too long and really attack that because we recognize it's, a milled street is dusty, it's not marked. It could have some tripping issues. So we also agree, we don't want that to go on very long.
I think the issue is then to make it clear to the public that we are waiting for the Con Ed and the cable companies and so on. Because believe it or not, even though you do that, I swear, a year or six months later, the street's open, maybe for an emergency or whatever. At least in Manhattan, it's pretty constant. Now, the other question I have is when you put down the, I guess you call them, covers over the street, in other words, the things that make noise if you don't.
Plates.
Plates. Plates. So the question I have there is how long, is there some timeframe for them to stay up? Central Park West is one big plate right now. And you know, it's just, this noise goes up. So my question is, is there a timeframe for a plate? Obviously, okay, we're waiting for the part, for the pipe, for Con Ed. We're waiting for, you know, the new cable from Verizon or whatever. But is there some timeframe on that? Or is that often just as long as it takes? Because again, it's three-one-one, you must get thousands of three-one-ones.
Okay. First, let me say the most critical thing when there are metal plates out in any community, they have to be secured properly. We don't, no one likes metal plates, but what they really don't like is when they're clanking.
No, I know.
Okay? Or when people walk over them and they actually can feel them even moving when another car goes over them. So if anyone, you or anyone.
Believe me, we call in pink car in two minutes.
Okay, beautiful. We have you. We have you on our phones, ready to hear from you. But we want to make sure they're always secured and that they're ramped. That's the most important thing. And then if there's a situation where they are out there too long, we are happy to call in the entity and work with them to expedite removal.
There's no mandated timeframe for fixing and therefore removing the plate. There's no timeframe on that.
Right. The tricky thing is that every repair is different, so it's hard to have a consistent timeframe.
Okay. I mean, I'd just say that, again, complaints all the time because of the length of construction, milling, plates, it's not your fault. But then what happens is people feel that there's nobody paying attention, even though I know you are. There's a, I'm trying to tell you, if you complain, perhaps one of the most along with e-bikes, which is not your problem, it's the plates and the streets of our city.
So for DDC, we often are, you know, the culprit installing plates on a lot of the roads. But to my counterpart's point, all of the, all of the repairs that are being made, they're both necessary, and we do our best to make sure that we do them right so that the timeline that it takes is time well spent so that we're not coming back constantly over and over and over again.
Okay. I mean, in addition to telling us what's going to be happening, how long the plates might be there, how long the milling might be, that's the kind of thing that would alleviate some of the concern, three-one-one calls. People are on edge, anxious, add congestion pricing to those who have a car, then add the millings, the plates, and the potholes. And you've got people upset. So I'm just saying, I think particularly in this timeframe, the more information, the better. That information is not available, the plates and the milling, how long? All right. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember Brewer. Jumping back into bridges. With the new NBI weighted scale, will there be any way to translate previous ratings to these new ratings to easily determine if a bridge condition has deteriorated?
Thank you for that question. Make sure you could hear me all right. Good. So I want to stress again that we've always been receiving information, right? Inspections never stopped. We were getting data, it was in the new Ashto element format. And what that meant, and the reason why there was that delay, was that we didn't have a really good way to properly communicate a single rating, which is required by the city council law, which is required by our law to do in our annual report as the overall condition of the bridge. So as we got more data and we analyzed it, we were then able to come up with that single number. In the background, we're getting all the conditions of all our elements and the condition states that it's in, from the CS one to the CS four that we described previously. We feel that the best path forward is to publish the new information in the upcoming months and then keep going forward with that scale and make sure everything is clear going forward.
So how will we be able to determine, like, if a bridge has gotten, like, significantly worse or not, considering that there is a different metrics that was used prior to this new one that's being now implemented?
So one of the things that we did in implementing the new metric was, we wanted to make sure that while the numbers are different, the number of bridges, as they decline over time, you know, they decline at a certain rate, but when you take a snapshot, it's not a huge difference, right? So what we wanted to make sure is that the new scale relatively lines up with the old scale. So it won't be a one-for-one apples-to-apples comparison, but we know that we're in the same ballpark and that are good, fair, and poor, and the thresholds that we're showing now are relatively similar to the good, fair, and poor thresholds that we used previously.
And do you believe a federal rating system should prescribe the overall rating?
So I do believe that it's important to have basic standards across an industry. You know, while there are certain things that in bridges, you want every bridge across the nation to perform a certain way, to be built to the right standards, to be looked at a certain way. You want a base level of training. That all happens. We are then able to, you know, apply our local knowledge to then get into the intricacies of what those conditions may be on our, on our structures, but that basic level has to be consistent across the industry.
Thank you for that. And how were the weightings between the deck, superstructure, and substructure determined? Doesn't failure of any component result in the failure of the bridge? And how can any component be less important than others?
So the ratings were determined through an extended analysis, and they're based on somewhat on order of importance, in a sense, right? So you want a good foundation, you want a good base, and that's your substructure. That substructure then holds up what we call the superstructure. That superstructure then holds up the deck. You could have a condition in your deck, which would appear to folks to be a pothole or a through hole or something like that, and that's a localized condition, and the rest of the bridge is in perfectly good shape. Likewise, you could have a localized condition on your superstructure, and the rest of the bridge is in perfectly good shape. So the weights that were assigned to the NBI ratings are indicative of those importance factors.
Thank you. And in addition to the upcoming bridge and tunnel report, will bridge inspection ratings data be published in the mayor's management report?
Yes, it's our intention to also publish that as well.
Thank you. I'd also like to take a moment to recognize Councilmember Farah Lewis, who is with us virtually. What percentage of the DOT projects are being done by DOT? And what percentage are being overseen by DDC?
Is it specific to bridge projects?
Yes.
So DOT oversees a majority of bridge projects across the city. There are certain programs where it made more sense for DDC to do a project, so, such as East Coast Resiliency Program. There are a number of pedestrian bridges that are part of that as well. The agencies coordinate very closely on the design and of those projects so that engineers from both sides are well aware of what's going on, coordinating on, as I said, the design, the inspection, to make sure that the bridges are delivered to the proper standards.
And for those that are doing the construction work on the bridges and tunnels, are they being done through, by way of RFP? Are you using an internal list? Like, how are you selecting those that do those projects?
So we have a few different methods. On the consultant side, it's quality-based selection. And so it's a RFP that goes out, and we get proposals that are then evaluated based on their quality, and the highest qualified proposer is then awarded that contract. On the construction side, majority of the DOT-led projects right now are design bid-build, which is lowest bidder. We are currently in the process of our first design-build project, and we are at the point there where we are working on the RFP for that.
And with the lowest, like, in circumstances of building a bridge or building infrastructure, do you feel that the lowest bidder is always the right one to be selected? Because what I've found in some of the RFP projects, not necessarily with DOT, but across agencies, is sometimes they may be selected as the lowest bidder, but we end up paying more on the, on that particular project because what happens is the bidder underbidded to be selected, but then comes back, and then the city has to add more money into that contract. I see that quite often with DIFDA, for example. And so do you find that that may not be the best model when we look at procurement, especially something as critical as a bridge? You want to make sure you have the best company dealing with our infrastructure.
So we are definitely proponents of the alternative delivery, design-build, even the prospect in the future of things like progressive design-build, with things that we would be in support of. Everything, every strategy has its time and place. So you want, we believe that we should have the option, and that depending on the situation and the project, we would then be able to pick the best delivery method for that project.
I would love to, like, explore that more with you all because I think, you know, when we talk about infrastructure, and also there was a report that the Comptroller had put out recently that talked about how expensive some of these capital projects are in terms of length of time and cost. And I do think that sometimes it's because we are kind of forcing the contractors to place a bid in that may not be a true reflection of the cost of the project, when really what ends up happening is the end amount we spend is really the true number that should have been put into the submission in the first place.
Yeah. And Chair, I just wanted to emphasize that in terms of lowest bidder for the design bid, you know, the design bid-build projects, we always, of course, select the lowest responsible bidder, we scrutinize every single respondent, we make sure that we're going to get a good product. You know, we, I think Paul's points were very important, and your concern about, do we add, you know, scope or costs onto the project is something to talk about, but just want to emphasize that all of the work done is a responsible contractor.
I appreciate that. And then in your testimony, Commissioner, you talked about preparing to award a contract to install the flood protection at Battery Parks Underpass and West Street Underpass as well in terms of floodproof gates and doors. With that project, will that be done through bid-build?
Yes, that's a design-bid-build project.
Okay. Okay, thank you for that. Moving on from bridges, I'm going to move to sewers. There's someone from DEP. Oh, there you are. Hi. Good morning. As we begin the summer, we are also beginning hurricane season. I know you've seen the pretty scary projections for the upcoming season. What steps has DEP and the other agencies taken to prepare the city for the likely more intense storms that we're facing this year?
Thank you for the question, and we're very happy to be talking to you today about this important issue. So there's two exciting things I want to share with the council. So recently, we put out the 2024 Stormwater Analysis, which we're happy to share with your office afterwards, that outlines our long-term plans for stormwater management in New York City as we face increasing climate change and more intense storms. In terms, you know, we lay out a number of short and long-term steps that are going to be necessary as the climate continues to change. In terms of this year's hurricane season, there are a number of short-term actions that we're taking that I'd like to highlight. The first is that we've started to install slotted manhole covers in strategic areas throughout the city to help attenuate intense flows from extreme storms. So basically, these manhole covers allow, if the street receives too much water while it's raining, that can flow into a catch basin, the water can kind of overtop the curb a little bit and flow into the slotted manhole. That allows the water to get into the sewer as fast as possible and to attenuate flooding on the street to the greatest extent possible. It also is a really good tool to use in places where there's a lot of leaves, and particularly in hurricane season, it's usually in the fall, so you get intense rain, lots of wind that pulls leaves off the trees, they wash onto catch basins and kind of clog them up. So the sewer system actually has capacity, but the leaves are kind of creating a barrier and the water can't get into the sewer. And so these slotted manhole covers, because they're a little bit elevated onto the sidewalk, they allow stormwater to get into the sewer. So we're planning to install about fifteen hundred of these throughout the city, and we're happy to work with your office if there are any particular locations where you would like us to evaluate the feasibility of installing those. The other thing is, we proactively every year clean between six and seven hundred miles of sewers to make sure that they're operating at full capacity. And we have a robust catch basin inspection program that makes sure that, using data to understand where catch basins get filled with debris the most, we're targeting our inspection resources to promptly and proactively inspect and clean those where necessary.
Thank you for that. To your point, that shows why the tree pruning schedule is so critical, because I get a lot of calls, and I know some of my colleagues have as well, including Chair Krishnan of Committee on Parks, in terms of being able to have a more regular cadence of the pruning of the trees to make sure that it's not as many leaves that are coming off the trees when the season begins to change. So that's something to think about as well by the administration. Now storms are becoming stronger, and what was once a one-in-every-five-year storm, or even once-in-a-decade storm, is now becoming more and more frequent. What steps has DEP already taken to modernize its data and assumptions so that we are prepared for the current climate as opposed to the climate from the nineteen hundreds?
So this is a challenge that is really complicated to solve, right? Because the sewers are built over the course of a hundred years, and so it will take us time to expand the sewer system to account for these new and more intense storms. The good news is that we're pulling in a lot of new data streams to help us really understand how the system is working and where there might be capacity to be leveraged short of capital projects. And so what that means, we call it a smart sewer system, and other cities across the country have already started to implement this, where you use gates and sensors within the sewer system because to move water around and create capacity. because to move water around and create capacity so that you don't have to necessarily expand the size of the sewer, you just need to kind of move the water faster away from where it's raining. Because it doesn't really rain consistently throughout the whole city at the same rate. And so if you can think smarter about how to leverage your existing infrastructure, you can create capacity and create opportu, you know, reduce the risk of flooding. You know, it might be flooding the sewer a little bit, but you're not going to have this, like, deep, dangerous flooding. You might have just a little bit of shallow street flooding. And so those are tools that we're implementing right now so that we can start to really understand and kind of create near-term improvements in the sewer system and near-term flooding relief as we comprehensively look about the whole city and think about what the right performance standard is. So, you know, right now, our standard is 1.75 inches per hour. That's a five-year design standard. What that means is like a 20% likelihood in any year that you'll get that kind of storm. We're working with some of the leading researchers across the country to best understand what the right future storm to plan is. You know, the last thing we want to do is pick a design standard that is inadequate even when we start. And so this is taking, you know, a good amount of work for us to make sure that we're properly anticipating what the future will hold, understanding that it's really hard to predict given the uncertainties of climate change.
No, thank you for that. And I know you're looking around the country. Have you looked beyond also? Because recently, a delegation of us traveled to Denmark and looked at some of the technology and techniques that they're even employing. Because they had a storm that was a significant one for them a couple of years back. And I know they're looking at things like rock wool and other type of materials to be able, some of which we've already kind of adopted. And like in Rockaway, we have some that we've adopted, and we've seen some improvements. But because of the dynamic of that coastal community, you have the bay on one side, the ocean on the other. You have a sewage system that doesn't have the full capacity that can take on rain and stormwater at the same time. So it's going to require the administration to really prioritize and invest in those type of communities to make sure that whatever flood barrier is needed is installed to make sure that we're protecting communities.
Absolutely. So there are a number of international leaders in this front. So you've mentioned Copenhagen. They're at the forefront. They coined the term "cloud burst" with their storm. And they have a really robust program where they invest a lot of money into building stormwater infrastructure, particularly because they're below sea level. So they're even more vulnerable to even moderate storms. We're also working with partners in Singapore and Tokyo and London, three other cities that have similarly complex, similarly congested cities. And all have slightly different challenges on the stormwater management side, but similar scales. You know, it's just like, New York City is super dense, so is Tokyo and London. And so it helps to talk with our colleagues in those cities to understand how they're thinking about investments. Tokyo has these really cool underground storage facilities that are massive. They're called the stormwater cathedrals. They are billions of dollars to construct, and they solve a particular problem that Tokyo has when the spring rains come. But we are thinking about how we might leverage those types of tools that they're using to solve some of the more idiosyncratic New York challenges we're facing. And so we're constantly in this process of learning from our colleagues. It's evolving, because everyone's dealing with climate change in a little bit of a different way. You know, the Northeast of America is getting more rain and shorter bursts. London's getting it longer, more steady rain. So they have, you know, because dealing with stormwater is a combination of how long it's raining, how many tide cycles you have during that rain, and how intense the rain is. So it's a three-factor analysis you're always doing in your district in particular.
Our first-hand.
Our hearts sink whenever it rains at high tide, I'm not going to lie.
Yours and mine both.
And it's one of those things that it's, it never, it didn't used to be as challenging, right? And so our tools that we have used in the past may be inadequate in some ways. And so we have to think about things that in the past, we were like, we don't ever want to pump stormwater. Now pumping stormwater is going to be a tool in the toolbox. It's an expensive tool. It has climate impacts. It takes a long time to implement. On the base side, that's going to be one of the tools we implement as part of that Army Corps project. So it's a new tool that we'll have, that we haven't been using before. So.
It would be great if DEP could pull together, like, a working group, not just with myself, but other of my colleagues that have coastal communities, like those representing Staten Island or like Councilmember Brandon. And, you know, the folks that do have the coastal area in their district, as well as yourself and some of the thought partners you're looking at to see how we can move this plan in a more timely fashion. Because I will say, in Copenhagen, what I found that may contribute to the success that they've seen is because there's been a complete buy-in from the government and from the public. And so they've been able to move pretty quickly on these things. But when we work in silos, it takes a long time. People have their different thoughts about what's going to work as opposed to coming together, having that unified conversation and creating a true plan of action moving forward. Because again, I'm really nervous about 2024 and wanting to make sure that even though some of this is more long-term, because the capital projects take as long as they do for whatever reason, we need to know, what are we doing this year in 2024 to make sure that we are protecting the communities? And when you think about the storms that are coming also, what does that mean for the subways? Because DEP, DOT are responsible for the pitching and the sewage system. But all of that stuff has been coming into the subways, which creates delays or stalls on our train. It creates such a burden on the infrastructure there. And after June 30th, we know we're going into congestion pricing. So you're going to see even more commuters traveling by public transportation. That's, you know, that's the projection from congestion pricing. And so what steps are you taking now, right? Because June 30th is just in a matter of a few weeks. And then hurricane season starts in just a matter of a couple of months. What is in play right now to make sure that we are, you know, all these things take into account? Because I do feel with congestion pricing and certain aspects of it, we're putting the cart before the horse in many instances, and it's going to impact countless New Yorkers because of inaction or things not happening quickly enough. So I really would like to understand what DEP and DOT is doing right now in lieu of all of this that's coming this year.
So we have been working really closely with the MTA's Capital Division to understand flooding conditions in the MTA, specifically to the point that you're making about how, you know, low-income New Yorkers have adverse impact when the subways are down or they can't get to work. And so we want to make sure that we are really making concerted efforts to partner with the MTA to identify flood-vulnerable areas and jointly investigate the causes and solutions. And so we've inspected with MTA over 35 stations where we have identified site-specific contributors to subway flooding. I'll highlight 207th Street Dykman on the A-Train in Upper Manhattan. This is a location where we installed those slotted manhole covers I mentioned earlier, because one of the challenges is that the, it's an incredibly steep slope leading right to the subway station entrance. And all the stormwater from this largely wooded parkland near the station was flowing and matting over the catch basins at the base of the hill. And so we installed slotted manhole covers. MTA also raised a step up. So sometimes you'll see that. You have to take a step up to then take a step down to get into the subway. And that's to help create a little bit more barrier for water to flow, because it'll always go to the lowest spot.
How many of the subways have they done that? Four out of the 35 that you've identified?
I don't know the number offhand, because there's different solutions for everyone. Sometimes it's raising the step up and adding these slotted manhole covers. Sometimes it's clog, it's fixing vent covers or raising vent covers. Each site, what we do is we go around with a team of engineers and a team of MTA engineers, and we try to find where the water can enter the subway. And then we create a site-specific solution for each subway station to make sure that we're mitigating the cause of flooding. And so we can give you a more full readout afterwards about which stations we've worked with the MTA on.
We were just saying we're going to follow up afterwards and get that.
It's been a really productive partnership. I mean, in some cases, the answer is we have to expand the sewer system, and then we have to think about how we prioritize solving MTA flooding issues against solving other priority flooding areas. But we've been working, I think, very closely in partnership also with DOT on the MTA flooding issues.
And if I can just add to what my colleague has said. We have a very nice initiative that hasn't come up yet today of porous pavement that we're working with DEP and sanitation on, the three agencies. And what that initiative will do is install panels in low-lying areas in the curb lane that can take in the water through the slab down into the ground, into the earth. And we have about 92 miles already installed or about to be completed. So that's a very significant effort on the part of the city. We're also looking at porous slabs on sidewalks. We have several locations that we have done, and we're looking to do some more. And the last thing I wanted to mention was that we're doing some resiliency for the Staten Island Ferry. We're doing a design-build project in the two terminals that will take some of the critical systems from ground level and put them up. So for example, in St. George Terminal, we'll take the fire alarm systems from the ground floor, and we'll move them up to the third floor.
Also, we've been joined by my colleague, Councilmember Lincoln Ressler. According to the preliminary MMR, there was a doubling of sewer backup complaints that were confirmed on city infrastructure. What does the city think caused this increase? And has there been any proactive steps taken to address these increases?
I'm so excited to talk about sewers, so happy to answer this question. So of the period of the PMMR, there was a 250% increase in rain over the same period last year. And so that's the primary driver of the increase in confirmed sewer, or in sewer backup complaints in general. When it rains very hard, there is, you know, the sewers can be momentarily overtaxed, and that can cause a sewer backup. I will say that overall, the department has made considerable efforts over the past decade to drive down sewer backup rates across the city. In terms of dry weather sewer backups, which are the worst of the worst, because that means that you're getting completely unfiltered or undiluted sewage in your home, we've seen like a 60% decrease over the past 10 years. And so that is where we spend a lot of time and energy doing proactive sewer cleaning and proactive sewer degreasing. So one of the primary contributors to a sewer backup is, in dry weather, it's not rain, it's fats, oils, and grease that are poured down the drain and enter the sewer system, causes the sewer system to clog. DEP has a robust degreasing program to make sure that we are identifying these recurring areas and proactively addressing them to minimize the potential for sewer backup. I also just want to take a quick moment, as a PSA, to say, as a homeowner, you typically do not have as part of your homeowner's insurance sewer backup insurance or water backup insurance. It's an optional rider that I encourage everyone to talk to their constituents about. I just did my homeowner's insurance last week, and it cost me $80 for $10,000 worth of coverage for a water backup or sewer backup in my home. And that's a really low-cost way to buy down your risk. If I look in my basement, if I have a sewer backup, it's going to take out my washing machine, my dryer, and my boiler in about a hot minute. So it's one of those things where, you know, that to me is $10,000 worth of stuff that I will immediately need to replace once it gets wet. And so for my family, it makes a lot of sense to pay that $80 a year to have that peace of mind. And for a lot of property owners, I think that that's a wise investment that they don't know that is available, right? And so talking to your real, your insurance agent is a really great way to make sure that you have coverage for these unforeseen kind of events.
No, and thank you for that. We actually just had a "Getting Your Business in Order" community meeting this week. We have another one coming up in my district in particular, because we found in these weather events that we've had a lot of homeowners that don't have homeowner's insurance or flood insurance or both, and renters that don't have renters' insurance. And, you know, it's caused a lot of financial burden on the back end of these storms. So I appreciate that. And then I'm going to jump into the resiliency of our infrastructure. I know you talked about the porous paving. So other than that, we want to understand what DOT is doing to ensure that there's adequate resiliency upgrades for our transportation system? And how does DOT prioritize which neighborhoods receive resiliency upgrade and work?
Okay, so every time we have a capital project, and these are mainly projects that we're working with on DDC, with DDC, we examine what opportunities we have for resiliency and to better protect our infrastructure. As I mentioned, depending on the area of the city that it is, that might include porous pavement. We're really seeing some good results with that, early results with all of the miles that have already been put in. We're increasingly looking at porous slabs in the sidewalks. And then working with our city partners at DEP for bio swales. I'm calling them the wrong name, I apologize. And making sure that that's taken care of. As Kim mentioned, when we're working near subway stations, we are collaborating with the MTA to make sure if anything needs to be raised or graded differently, we do that. I don't know, Tom, if you would like to add to any, give some examples of some of the recent projects that we've done with you?
So throughout the city, we have been, well, obviously coordinating with DOT on opportunities, including with some of the projects that include bikeways and on projects dedicated for DEP to do stormwater work, including the porous pavement, rain gardens, and infiltration basins. We've had a very robust, over the last five years, of installing these type of green solutions. And they are good accompaniment to the hard sewers that are being installed in terms of helping to manage local flooding.
Thank you. And at our past hearing on hard infrastructure, DOT testified that they had recently received $36 million of new capital funding to fully fund the replacement of the Harper Street asphalt plant. What is the current status of the plant? And how is DOT implementing sustainable practices in terms of creating asphalt?
Right, so Harp, let me get you the information in just a second. I know we're in the process of working with DDC on Harper Street. We can get you a specific update as to where that reconstruction is.
Yeah, sorry, Harper's with our Public Buildings Division, so we'll get you the information.
I know DDC is here. Are they able to answer and give us an update?
Yeah, we're going to try to get you an update now.
Okay.
Thank you.
And while you're looking for that, I have a couple more asphalt-related questions. What is DOT's opinion about the use of recycled asphalt pavement? Is there further room for improvement to use more than 50% recycled asphalt pavement? And along with DOT's use of recycled tire rubber and asphalt mixes and the use of recycled plastic waste in the hot-mix asphalt? Which of these technologies or innovative mixes does DOT believe will have the greatest environmental and cost-saving potential for the city?
Thank you for that question. So currently, this past year, we have used 43% recycled asphalt in our pavement. That is a very good number. We're usually hitting around 40, but now we're trying to increase it without reducing the quality of the mix. We're interested in getting as high up as 50% if we are able to. And when we redo our Harper asphalt plant and we have a brand-new plant, we're hopeful we can also increase the percentage there. So using RAP is great. That's an excellent thing, that that material doesn't get back in the landfill. It reduces costs. It still produces a very good material for the roadway. As you mentioned, we've also been looking at what we call synthetic binder asphalt. And sometimes people are calling it plastic asphalt. But it's not yet using recycled plastic bottles, for example. The technology that is present, especially in other parts of the world, is using of the world, is using new plastic sort of pellets in this product. The beauty of that product is that someday it will probably get into recycled plastic, but the best thing about it for us in the short run is that we can have a material that can easily be colored. So black asphalt is dark. You can't really put a color in there. It just gets eaten up by the petroleum-based product that asphalt is. But if we use the synthetic binder, it can be clear, and then we can add in dyes and coloring. So we did some very interesting pilots using red and green asphalt, and we've been watching how well they hold up. But unfortunately, the materials for those two pilots had to come all the way from Europe, from two different countries in Europe, because we're not yet there in this country to have all of that yet. So what we need to do is bring the industry along so we can do more localized things. The price of those pilots was quite high, so it's not really something that's feasible to do on a large scale yet. But we are working with the industry, and we intend to advance all of those technologies so we can have more of that.
Thank you for that. And I find it so unfortunate, like, we have to continue to go out the country for a lot of these things that are better environmentally, or, you know, sustainability-wise, and hope the industry is able to pull it along here. My colleagues earlier asked a question about potholes. And so I wanted to know, as a follow-up, is there a plan to increase the internal capacity for hot asphalt to make sure potholes are corrected the first time?
So I'm going to check into what your colleague raised in terms of the Staten Island situation with Cold Patch. We do have hot asphalt available day and night. We have vendors that we work with, so we should not be making any widespread repairs with Cold Patch.
I'm going to pause real quickly to let Councilmember Ressler ask his questions.
Great. Good afternoon. Good to see you all. I have a lot of DDC and DEP, I should say DEP-related questions on our infrastructure, but I'm going to focus today on my favorite, least favorite project, the BQE. Sorry, Deputy Commissioner Schwartz, but you're here. So, you know, what a gift. So I just firstly wanted to talk about a broader issue, salt. And the salt, the deterioration and negative impact that salt has on our concrete bridges, on concrete on our bridges. Why do we continue, or could you first just speak to the negative impact that salt has, and explain why we continue to use salt instead of alternative approaches?
Good to see you, Councilmember.
Always.
So, salt, salt can deteriorate steel, right? So what happens is if you get cracks in your concrete pavement and it's reinforced concrete, it gets to what we call the reinforcing bar, or rebar for short, and then it can create a corrosion cycle. The corrosion cycle then results in rust. Rust takes up a bigger volume than steel, and then forces those internal pressures then create popping or delaminations, and that leads to the deterioration of pavement. Salt is, though, right now, also the very cost-effective material to deice the streets in the city. Going to other alternatives, such as sand, does not do any melting. And then there's alternative materials, which we use in very specific locations, which do an adequate job, but are extremely costly. So we do do alternative deicing within DOT. Most of the salting is done by sanitation, of course, on the street system. And we use those on the East River Bridges, and we use them on the BQE, the cantilever section between, and other structures, the 21 bins between Atlantic and Sands.
But of course, the deterioration and the need to replace deteriorated rebar is also extremely costly to the city, and, you know, potentially massive capital projects. So the upfront costs of salt or a more costly alternative may or may not make sense long-term financially for the city. When was salt, when did you discontinue use of salt on the BQE triple cantilever?
So we discontinued use of salt on that in 2021. And we also did something else that I think is really positive, that we don't talk much about, is we implemented a deck sealing program. So there are materials out there, silane is a commonly-used one, that is applied to bridge decks. We do that as a matter, of course, on major capital projects, where we'll apply the material. And we received funding a number of years ago for a couple of crews to now go out, and every four years or so, reapply the material. And so that's an approach to actually prevent, help prevent the permeation of chloride ions that are coming out of salt into the bridge decks and into that rebar. So we actually clog up those pores and prevent that from going through.
But the fact that we use salt for, I don't know, 60 or 70 years on this structure, even though it's been discontinued for the last two or three years, doesn't that still mean that every time it rains, the salt is still present and mixing into the rebar and further deteriorating the structure?
So there's certain saturation factors. And, you know, if you're able to, you could significantly slow down the rate. I won't say that you can necessarily stop the rate, but by discontinuing the use, you should, in theory, significantly slow down that rate of corrosion.
And then I just wanted to ask about the decision to shift, we have half a billion dollars, out of the five-year capital plan into future years, into the out years, that has been made by this administration over the past, you know, 24 months, and to not invest in an immediate way in the stabilization of the BQE, of the triple cantilever BQE structure. How can you provide assurances to everyday New Yorkers, to constituents in the 33rd Council District, to me and our chair, that the triple cantilever is safe when we're not making these necessary short-term investments that previous administration had allocated funding for and were determined necessary?
So again, I want to assure everyone here that the BQE is safe. We have invested a lot of resources in monitoring. We do quarterly inspections, in addition to the biennial and special inspections that could be done by licensed professional engineers. We have monitors out on the structure itself that are measuring vibrations and other things, so we have a good understanding of what's going on. In addition to that, about $177.8 million was left in the five-year window. That's going to help us to do a few different things. One, it's helping to address the interim repairs that we're actually conducting currently. As you may be well aware, sir, there's a weekend closure coming up this weekend, where we're going to complete our interim repair, the majority of the interim repairs, there's a little bit of work. We're going to have to come back and resurfacing and striping, but this will be the major concrete work, the last step of that. And it also is here to fund our Cap- our Capitaly, When and Where program. So should something arise that is unexpected, that is picked up by our inspectors who are out there frequently, we'll have the resources in place to address it.
I appreciate some resources are still available, and appreciate the commitment that additional resources can be made available. There's a significant shift of half a billion dollars away from the five-year capital plan to the out years. It just raises questions when we all know that this structure requires our immediate attention. The last thing I wanted to ask, and I apologize, Chair, for going over, and I promise this is my last question, is, Deputy Commissioner, do you believe that we could safely install columns into the current triple cantilever structure to stabilize this structure? Is that a feasible onto Furman Street on the far side? Do you think that is a feasible approach that we could pursue?
Given the structure and the way it was developed, and the way that it has behaved over the last 70, 80 years, no, I do not believe that's a feasible solution.
The structure couldn't be encapsulated and columns installed. You don't think that's a feasible potential outcome?
The structure was built and behaves in a certain way. By suggesting what you're, or by doing what you're suggesting, you're completely changing the behavior of that structure and making it perform in a manner for which it was not designed to perform.
I always appreciate witnesses who provide direct answers to questions, and it's always good to see you. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Same here. I just want to stay on BQE for a little bit, since Councilmember Ressler took us there. So last week, DOT announced the final phase of the closure and the interim repair work for the BQE. This is the third time drivers have been diverted onto local streets. How is DOT preparing for the rerouting of this particular traffic? And what lessons have been learned from the first two times a closure like this took place? And I appreciate it being on a weekend, by the way.
Excuse me?
I said I appreciate it being on a weekend.
Yes, absolutely. And that's one of the things we look to do, right? Sorry. As we look to minimize the impact to the greatest extent possible, due to the types of repairs that we needed to do for the structure, it did require the full structure to be closed. So weekends and nights obviously have a less of an impact than during the weekdays. We've done extensive coordination, and we've learned from the previous. So what we've been doing is we've reached out to all our city, local partners, the state partners, even our regional partners through Transcom, to make sure that the word got out to all the other agencies about this work. That allows them to then broadcast the message across all their networks. In addition, we've got VMS boards, morning people. We have worked with NYPD very closely, and they will be providing upwards of 100 traffic enforcement agents to help move traffic through the local streets. We have reconfigured the Gowanus Expressway to include the HOV lane, which would normally be going in the outbound direction, but we'll make that inbound so that people have access to the tunnel. And we have adjusted our signal timing to also provide traffic to come through. We've also learned that you need to do a lot of community outreach, and we need to get the word out right. So we continue to do that. We've worked with folks sitting here to make sure that they're aware of the project, and they can get it out to the constituents. At the same time, we have a full-time community liaison that is assigned to this project. She's got a large network of hundreds of people, so she's able to blast out notices. And we've taken out almost two dozen advertisements in print, radio, TV, and online advertising to let people know. The biggest message to get out there is, and I think our press announcement came out just today, is to stay away. It is always a struggle, no matter what. When you get into beautiful weather, like we're expecting, people come out. So we will try to get the message out and try to move traffic as best as we can. But for people to stay away would be, obviously, the best thing.
No, thank you. And you answered one of my questions in terms of the outreach that's going to be conducted. And are you confident this will be the last time there'll be a need to close and closes roadway and conduct interim repair work?
It's the last time that we have it scheduled currently. We continue to monitor the condition of the structure, and should future repairs warrant, then we may be in the same position again.
And I know you answered some of these questions with Councilmember Ressler, but I just wanted to get a little bit more granular on some of, some additional questions. So there's approximately $174.9 million allocated in the five-year capital plan for the rehabilitation of the BQE from Sands Street to Atlantic Avenue project. In the 10-year capital plan, there was a total of $1.5 billion allocated to this project. What is the current scope of this project? What is the status of this project? And what is the updated timeline for completion?
So, so as we explained, the interim repair work, we're hoping that major closures this weekend, and then we can come in later, and we could wrap up that project. So the balance of the money that's within that five-year window, the balance of the money that's within that five-year window would then support any other needed repairs that come up, be they, most likely in the when and where sense, or other flags that may occur. We continue to push forward on a major project, and we are currently in collaboration with FHWA, New York State DOT, to undertake a comprehensive traffic study and prepare the necessary documentation to enter into an environmental review process that we're aiming to start by the end of this year.
And then what's the updated timeline? So if you're going to start at the end of this year, what's the timeline?
Right. So we would start that at the end of this year. It's a federally mandated two-year process, and then construction would, could begin as early as fiscal year 2028.
And why is capital funding for the project continually rolled back into later years?
The funding is just moved within the capital plan to better align with the schedule of the project.
And is the DOT running into any challenges with the completion of this project? If so, can you share that with us?
Bridge projects take a very long time and are very complex, so there's always challenges that are coming up. We're working through those. It's really a matter of close relationships with our federal and state partners to try to get through that process. And we've got a very robust community engagement aspects, aspect to this as well, to try to bring everyone along in the process at the same time. By taking these steps early, you set yourself up hopefully for a very successful project.
Can you give some examples of what some of the challenges are?
So, one of the things that has been spoken about quite publicly is just the number of lanes, for example, that the highway will be, right? And so we have undertaken these traffic studies, and our goal is to assess that data and be able to build a structure that is as narrow as possible, but is, that meets the needs that, and demands that come out of the study. Right now, that BQE is currently about 33 feet, so it's substandard by today's standards. So we do need to bring it up to safety standards, and then we'll work through the data with our partners to get to what the right solution is.
And in February, the Federal Highway Administration rejected the city's application for a grant that would have provided $800 million in funding to replace the decaying triple cantilever portion of the 11-mile BQE. What was the reason given for the rejection? And how does the department plan on moving forward with repairs of the triple cantilever without this federal grant money?
Sure. So, as you know, the administration is committed to delivering that long-term fix for that city-owned portion of the BQE. And we're grateful to the Biden administration for even the opportunities and the other ways that they can, that they look to help support us in that mission. The submission was early in the timeline. I think we were all aware that it was a little bit early, but it was smart to get it in, get some feedback, get a better understanding. It has no impact to our timeline, and then we look forward to future opportunities to resubmit a stronger application.
And turning to a related part of this project, how many tickets has DOT given for overweight trucks on the BQE?
Yeah, we don't have those numbers with us, but we can get them to you today.
Please do. And has there been repeat offenders, either individual trucks or companies? And how has DOT pushed those companies to find alternative routes?
All right. So, and we'll note, we'll, we'll note which, you know, not which company necessarily, but whether there have been repeat offenders. If we have, you know, in the case that we have a repeat offender, we are doing additional outreach to them to try to get them to understand the reasons why they're being ticketed, and what strategies they could employ to avoid that in the future.
But we are mainly seeing people not getting repeat violations. The companies are learning and have adjusted their behavior, and the violations have gone way down from the beginning.
Way down? So when you give me the numbers, it'd be good to see. So I have apples-to-apples what that looks like.
If you, like, week by week or month by month.
That would be great. Thank you for that. I'm going to just end with a few questions on behalf of Councilmember Narcisse, who had to leave. More questions? My district, this is from her, of course, so not my district, but her district, has a lot of waterfront, which are impacted by weather. What specific steps are being taken to ensure that our public infrastructure and spaces are resilient to the impacts of climate change? Maybe, and it also asks if DOT is still using blacktop to patch sidewalks. We have seen that happen in the district, and it looks pretty bad.
The only time we use asphalt on sidewalks is as a temporary repair, when there's an imminent, you know, dangerous condition. That is a very there's an imminent, you know, dangerous condition that is a very big trip hazard, for example. So in very few circumstances, we do it. We recently did a small area around one of the NYCHA buildings, and we have then scheduled the permanent replacement to go back in and do it properly in concrete. So that does not happen very often, but if she has anything she wants to give to us, that is fine. And then, as we've discussed previously, we work closely with our partners here at the table on resilient streets to examine every location that we're working in and to see what sorts of strategies we can employ to make that project more resilient and to address any issues with flooding or ponding.
Thank you so much for this testimony and public conversation today. I am now going to open the hearing for public testimony.
Thank you very much, Chair.
Thank you. And I remind members of the public that this is a government proceeding and that decorum shall be observed at all times. As such, members of the public shall remain silent at all times. The witness table is reserved for people who wish to testify. No video recording or photography is allowed from the witness table. Further, members of the public may not present audio or video recordings as testimony, but may submit transcripts of such recordings to the Sergeant-at-Arms for inclusion in the hearing record. If you wish to speak at today's hearing, please fill out an appearance card with the Sergeant-at-Arms and wait to be recognized. When recognized, you will have two minutes to speak on today's hearing topics. Today's hearing topics are the oversight of future proofing, the city's public infrastructure, intro number two seventy-two, a local law in relation to a capital plan and timeline for installing public bathrooms, intro number five seventy-four, a local law to amend the administrative code of the City of New York in relation to expanding the information provided on the Open Space Coordination Platform. If you have a written test, a written statement or additional written testimony you wish to submit for the record, please provide a copy of that testimony to the Sergeant-at-Arms. You may also email written testimony to testimony@council.nyc.gov within seventy-two hours of this hearing. Audio and video recordings will not be accepted. I will call the first panel, which will be Sharon Brown and Raul Rivera. Did you turn it on?
Okay, my name is Sharon Brown. Public restrooms are a must. We have military, we have police, we have undercover police officers, military. We have so many undercover people that when we are abusive to the general public, we're also abusive to the undercovers, and they see how people are treated as the public. We can't have that FDNY, anyone looking into different situations. Okay, we need something called the stranded persons law for transportation. This is transportation? Okay, there should be a stranded strap hanger law. No woman or child or man should be turned away from a government service. No stranded strap hanger. So if someone is consistently trying to get somewhere, and they're shown that they're going to and from certain places, and they don't have the means, they should be able to get on and either get some kind of pass or something that shows that they can ride or they should, they should have something set up for them so they can ride. No child should come from school and not have the money to ride. Bridges and tunnels, or we also need access a ride should be available to all and also to those who are stranded. If there are people who are stranded, they should be able to get into an access a ride and get home. We shouldn't have people walking for hours and miles and things like that. This is concerning transportation. The bridges should have a backup bridge. We are going into the technology age, and there should be immediate ways to make bridges, roads, and tunnels immediately. We should have backup systems where we can lay something down immediately so that people can get over a road or something.
Thank you.
I think that's it.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much.
Good afternoon, my name is Raul Rivera. I'm a TLC driver and a TLC driver advocate. Restrooms are important. One of the issues with restrooms in the city is we have thousands of restaurants, and they don't, they want you to buy their food, but they don't care about you using the rest, the restrooms. Everywhere you go in the city, you see signs, "Out of Service, Out of Service" when it comes to the restaurant. So you can't use the, you know, the restrooms in the restaurants. That's an issue. Maybe the city council should look into that. But, you know, what I really want to say is that, to you, Chair, I don't know what we have to do for you to help the drivers. The drivers are being locked out. I don't know if you know about it. There's chaos happening right now. Uber and Lyft are locking out the drivers. They can't work. I don't know why they don't show up here. I don't know why, if you're aware of this, but there's going to be a lot of protesting going on. We're asking that they come out to your office and protest in your district. That's what they have to do. I don't know why they don't want to do that, but they should. Uber and Lyft are locking out the drivers. The utilization rate that was created by AmeriJoshi is a disaster, and it's hurting the drivers. And in this city council, we have black people, we have Puerto Ricans, we have Dominicans, right? It's our own people that are stopping us. Look in the mirror. You're not helping us. We got bills for, we got bills for the drivers. You don't want to pass the bills. Everybody says white supremacy. It's not white, it's not the white man that's stopping me. It's my own people, my Puerto Rican people, my black people, my Dominican people. You guys are blocking us. It's not the white man. It's not Donald Trump. You guys are blocking us. We're losing our city. Transportation alternative, Danny Harris. Danny Harris is the true DOT. We ask for an investigation of the DOT. The DOT is dirty, it's filthy, it's dirty, it needs to be investigated, and it's our own people scoring us.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Rivera.
It's our own people. Come on, Powers, you know, it's our own people. You're black, you ain't white, you're black.
Thank you for reminding me of my skin color and my race. Next, we will have Glenn Boloski and Tasha Lera-Bores, who are both online.
Good morning, Chair. How are you today? I hope everyone's well. Thank you for this spicy last testimony, and I'm sorry about that. Some people you can't control. So thank you so much for your great team, Chairwoman Selvina Brooks, and also for this important infrastructure meeting. And also I want to thank central staff and your local team as well. We're talking about infrastructure. I'm in the parking ticket industry. When we've had Hurricane Sandy, sadly, it hurt a lot of people who are still hurt. We need this infrastructure done. We really need it, and we really need it now. We've also lived through not just Hurricane Sandy, but the terrible bombings on nine-eleven, the terrorist bombings, and many other things that have happened where we don't even have the ability to go have hearings on tickets because the city closes down the PVB, just like they did during COVID, and backlogs of tickets, and they won't let us do virtual hearings. They just make it hard for people, and it's really not nice. Government needs to be nice. There needs to be a little love, a little compassion, and there's zero from the Department of Finance in that respect. I want to thank the Chair and the team for my opportunity to testify. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Tasha Lera-Bores.
You may begin.
Yes. Hello, good afternoon. My name is Tasha Lera-Bores. I'm a transportation and voting community organizer for Center for Independence of the Disabled, New York. I wish to speak about an issue, an important issue that Sydney wants to bring to the committee's attention, serious safety concern on New York City streets and sidewalks. You know, the increase over the past few years in the use of recreational electric mobility devices such as electric bikes and scooters. Users of, users of these means of transportation regularly ride on city sidewalks, often not stopping at cross, crosswalks and are ignoring stop signs and red lights. They also often do not abide by directional regulations of the streets or lanes they are riding on. This is a major safety hazard for all New Yorkers trying to navigate the city streets. This is a safety hazard for people with disabilities. We have people with visual or hearing impairments, and it affects, it affects them. In fact, it's come to our attention that there have already been several accidents on NYC streets owing to these issues. The DOT is responsible for ensuring the safety of all pedestrians on NYC streets, including individuals with disabilities. It's Sydney's position that the safety plans, safety action plans currently in place are no longer sufficiently protecting New Yorkers with disabilities, and these plans need to be updated in consideration of the massive increase of the use of electronic transportation devices and the documented fact that this increase is correlated to accidents causing injury and unfortunately death. Sydney is advocating.
Time has expired. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Do you want to finish your, you could finish your sentence. I think you were ending.
Yes, it was just, also, we also request efforts to protect individuals with mobility. Hearing and vision impairments are expressly considered incorporated into these updated safety plans.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If there's anyone online that wishes to testify and was not recognized, we ask that you raise the hand icon now. With that, we will adjourn this hearing, and I thank everyone that came out today to testify on the state of our infrastructure. Thank you, and this meeting is concluded.